Please rise to the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Read the minutes from the last meeting. Those present were Fred Farley, Jody Price, John Piper, Pam Van Hook, and Toby Binge. Others present were Andy Emmer, Robin Cook, Melissa Cunningham, Tina Henderson, and Peggy Jackson. Minutes were vetted and approved from the March 24th meeting. Andy gave his water, wastewater and street report. Also, Andy gave his building commission report. Under old business, there was discussion regarding the Northern Hamilton County Trail. Tina Henderson spoke to the council regarding this proposed trail and the importance of having a master plan. After a brief discussion, the council unanimously approved the expenditure not to exceed $3,400 for the town's portion to fund the master plan. Mr. Piper made the motion and Mrs. Price accepted it. Under other old business, the Atlanta Youth League, Mr. Farley read the attached letter which turns the Atlanta Youth League property at 795 South Central over to the town. Mr. Farley assured the community that the goal of the council is to restore the ball fields to be used for the intended purposes. Attorney Melissa Cunningham will look into the legality of having a property titled to the town. To the gratitude of the town council, many members of the community offered their support in helping to rebuild. Under new business, there was leak adjustment. Kay Delulo attended the meeting. First submitted sewer adjustment was approved. She also expressed concerns about the building to the west of her building. Mr. Emmer will look into the local ordinances to determine if they are applicable, ordinance slash state violation. Mrs. Delulo also asked the town to shave down the sidewalks in front of her building where they are being. The council will look into the matter. Another subject of new business, on the liens filed at 415 South Railroad, the council discussed the attached letter requesting that the liens at this property be reduced. After a brief discussion, the council denied this request. With no further business to discuss, the claims were signed and the meeting was adjourned. Do I hear a motion this evening? Will we accept these minutes?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
There was also a earth festival meeting on April the 14th. Those present, Fred Farley, John Binge, Jody Price, Pam Van Hook, Jennifer Farley, John Piper, Andy Emmer, and Robin Cook. One order of business that we discussed, we will have two scholarships this year that will be given to students at Hamilton-Hunt High School. One will be a $1,000 Ivy Tech scholarship and the second one will be just a $1,000 scholarship to the second person. We will not reveal those names this evening due to the fact we want it to be a surprise to those folks there at the awards night.
Can I make the motion to accept those minutes?
Second?
Second.
Home favorite?
Bye.
Three reports.
Andy.
All right, our water, the plant's treated 682,590 gallons of water since April 14th. Our average daily usage is down to 48,756. And we only had four properties flagged for leaks this month. It's been our lowest so far. Filter for backwash from the 22nd, we had one water leak that's been repaired. And water meter's been read for the month of April. Continuing to have numerous locate tickets from the phone company. If I can't get this issue resolved, I may need some council involvement in that. I'm trying to work this out. I assure you guys, last week I spent a day and a half just going through them. I mean, I got almost 100 tickets that all overlap each other and go from one end of the town to the other. I did, I spent a better part of the day Monday doing locates through two runs, basically the whole length of the town where they were supposed to start. They didn't start. They started out on Adams, which hadn't been located yet. So, I called the phone company also. The one water leak I had is where they hit us over on Central. And, you know, I put in a request, which I think, I pretty much think is going to be ignored. I called the phone company and because 200 years ago someone said that phone line needs to be 30 inches in the ground. They're stuck on that. There is no real reason for it to be that deep, but they keep going at four feet, which everything we have in water is at four feet in the town. And I'm trying to get them to get away from four feet. Every time they hit us, I'm not kidding, it had been like an inch. I mean, if they would've just been that much higher, we would've been, you know, we'd have been okay. And I'm going to see what happens. I talked to supervisor here. I called the engineer. The phone company involved with him about it. And I guess when they start back up, we'll see, we'll see what happens. You know, I've asked about the other thing I've asked about and I've been ignored. We got alleys and those, Fred's probably familiar with it, but most of our water and sewers ran right next to each other for the most part in town. Now you have to have 10 feet of separation, but with that being said, we've got long runs down these alleys where they're running, they're running this fiber optic right on top for water and sewer and the other side of the alley is wide open. And I can't get them to move over, to relocate it. I mean, that would just take a whole nother, two elements out. It would greatly lessen, if they came up shower and moved away, it would, you know, greatly lessen damage. But then later, when we go back and we have a problem, now we got to dig and work around fiber optic phone lines, you know, which is expensive if you damage them. And I just don't understand why. And like I said, I've tried to talk with the engineer and they, you know, they just don't care. So, you know, I want to have another discussion with them, but then, you know, I mean, we may have to have a meeting with them, with the council, with us. I mean, I understand they have a right to run in our right of way. I mean, I know the state statute is that, but all these conflicting utilities, you know, they need to move away from us.
So it's not a question that they don't have the room, the extra room. It's just that they want to put them where they want to put them regardless.
Well, because an engineer grew it up that doesn't even work for the company anymore and they just want to run with it. They just want to run with his plan. And the plan is flawed. I mean, there's just so many areas. I understand there's certain areas where utilities get tight and it is what it is, but we've got, you know, areas where, you know, they can move over. I mean, we have some alleys that they could be as much as 10 feet away from us. There's nothing, except maybe some service lines going across. And one, it gets away from us for future projects, but two, you know, this depth. You know, I talked with the supervisor from board crew, well, everybody likes to run at four feet. And I went, man, that's where all my water's at. You know, I mean, for the most part, all our sewer's deeper. You know, a big chunk of the town, I mean, you know, you're 10, 12, 14, and on down when you get to the north end of town. So, the sewer hasn't been as much as an issue. I mean, they did tag a lateral which they repaired. And the only sewer issue I had was out by the sewer plant, which that was a mistake on Holy Moly's part because they didn't notify us. So when they did, they did a road crossing and hit it. They knew it right away. They did it. So, I mean, we repaired it, but all of our issues have been with water.
How many repairs have you made tonight?
Well, one sewer and then it would be one, two, three, four.
Good Lord, you made that.
Four water? I think that's right. Because most, as so far, every water hit's been on Central. And one, two, three, four. Yeah. It's been four. Been four. You know, they just think it's acceptable. Well, it happens.
How many of those have resolved within loss of service? That question, I mean, have you had to shut a main down?
Uh, two.
Two?
Mm-hmm. Either shut them down or slow them down. I mean.
Slow them down.
Yeah. The two of them were smaller. We pinched them off when we did them live, but.
That's the main line going there too.
Yeah, that's just, I don't know, like I say, I'm going to talk to them again, but I think, you know, I mean, if we can't get it worked out, we may have to have a meeting with the phone company. All of you, some of you, I mean, I just.
Is that code? It has to be four feet. Is that code?
No, that's, it's 30 inches. It's their own personal thing. I mean, they've got to be at least 18 in the ground.
So there's no, we're not worried about like freeze, freeze or anything like that?
Not for the cable now.
Yeah, just being buried enough to where.
Well, you know, I asked for two feet, to be honest with you. I said, if they've run it two, you know, we're okay. And when I said, well, we might hit a gas line, I'm like. I said, spot, you know, I said, you don't mind tearing our stuff up? And I said, it's, you know, it's bigger. I mean, you know, that one repair, I mean, that one repair, you know, over $500 in couplers. I mean, that's what they don't understand. And, you know, when they get in this part of town and they get bigger, I mean, these couplers, these water mains are four, five, 600 bucks for one coupler and you put two on there. I mean, it's, you get into, you get into a $1,000 repairer right quick, you know? And I'm not.
Beside your time.
Besides your time. I'm just talking about parts. You know, that's what a lot of people don't think about, even the service line. With the lead-free brass we have to use now, those couplers are 37 bucks a piece. So once they'll hit two cuts, it's $100 worth of materials we're throwing in the ground plus the ton. And I, you know, I know.
I've seen them out there. I know what he's talking about.
They're trying to ramrod through. One of the repairs was, I was actually out of town, John helped on with Murray, because I was at conference and they went right through a four-inch line. But, you know, I'm hoping, I'm going to call him back. Engineer was supposed to talk to him, so I'm gonna, I was waiting. That was last week. I talked to the engineer at the phone company.
Maybe we need to have a meeting with them.
I know he was supposed to be coming up here, so I was going to wait and call him back to see what he says, but I just wanted to, you know, if we don't get something worked out, we may need to, you know, have a meeting. I mean, they're just getting started.
Yeah, I was going to ask you how much have we actually got done?
Item one, not even, I bet it's not even 10%, 20%. It's been, you know, very little. They're just getting, they're basically up and down Central. Then a couple of side shots, a couple of small runs up in the north quadrant, up around by your house. But, I mean, all the main runs.
I hate to see the mess when they get on Indianos.
I talked to them about all of, you know, restoration, which they're going to have restoration crew come back after the handholds go in and it'll be done surface restoration. That's one of the things that irritated me. We had a, they went and spot gas and had a road cut on Central or in the right of way where there was a driveway that was asphalt. I told them, I said, cut, don't cut the driveway. Don't cut the road, you know? I said, the road's too thick and the road get a lot of heavy traffic. What do you think? What do you think they listen? No?
No.
They cut the road. That's what I told them. Do not cut the road. Spot your utilities out of the road. So it's just another, you know, thing I might have to deal with. When I talk back with them, I will let you know if we need to do something. Moving on, I'm going to be switching to Hawkins for our chlorine in a few weeks. We're no longer going to have to pay deposits on the bottles and we're going to save $560 every time we get chlorine. Wastewater, been performing daily checks to the lift station, ponds, and the SSO during rain events. Our sewer plant's open and we're discharging. Our weekly sample's complete. Installed, we installed one new manhole and connected one new home and one existing home to that. I spoke to Triad today and they're working on the sewer plant revisions. We'll see stew's here now. Bio books arrived and I began treating ponds this week. Have fluid waste scheduled for tomorrow to clean the lift station and the effluent channel. Grease in the lift station is the worst I have ever seen it. And it's actually causing all the floats to malfunction and the pumps not to run between Sunday and Monday. I mean, I did rounds, but in that point four hour period, I mean, it was down to 24 hours, basically. Still, well, I'm going to find that out. I'm going to find out. I mean, I think it's work coming from, but I'm going to check.
Most of the grease.
Yeah, it's all fat, fats, oils, and greases. I mean, you know, butter, stuff like that. But it's, I mean, there's a ring around the inside of that thing now. When I got that pump down, saw what was happening, it's sticking off the wall about that far. And at the wall, I mean, it's like that thick. It tapers down. Obviously, I've had some chunks there before. You can take one of the floats and hit it and break it loose. I mean, it just sets on it like a shelf. It's nuts. I've never, never seen it. And we've got, I put a bio block in there. I may have to switch to something else. That's kind of taken care of since we had these problems, but there again, you know, that block lasts for about three or four months. And they're 500 bucks a piece. It's just becoming a real, you know, maintenance issue that we haven't had in the past. But I'm going to track down where I think it's coming from and I'll let you know.
That's against the ordinance to be dumping the grease down there as part of discharge.
Yeah, it's against it.
Yeah, there's a place back here.
There are, aren't there inline grease traps that they can put in?
They have one.
Oh, they do?
They don't use it.
If you can keep it clean, it goes short, it goes right through it.
Yeah, once it's full, if you don't clean it, it just short circuits and goes. It'll go right on over it. Now, I already had, I had to clean the sewer line back there once because the old sewer line was closing down with homes and stuff on it. And, you know, get that fluid waste cleaned out. Under streets with help arcade, repaired 38 potholes and we're going to be finishing the rest of them soon. I appreciate that help from those guys. And then I've started ordinance mowing on two properties and have one that may need a letter. I was going to get Murray on. And then we have one property we're going to have to clean. He sent notification out on that they did nothing. That's more or less abandoned property. And we have another one that's owned by a bank that we may have to notify. I think some of the people in the neighborhood have been helping pile in the yard. They're doing locates and it keeps the stuff in the yard and just keeps growing and growing. It's become like a little dump. Then we had one stray dog owner was located and then I'd like to thank Alan Perry. He's been helping me out here and there with smogging and helping put that manhole in. And under buildings, we had two building permits issued, two inspections, five building permit increase, two zoning increase. And one thing I didn't put in there, Fred touched on, I looked at our zoning ordinance on the building and went down and looked at it. The condition it's at right now, I mean, the one thing I can have and do, and I'm going to go talk to him. I want to talk to you first, is I'm just going to talk to him first and then if you need to send a letter, we could, or I could deliver the letter, but just board it up. I mean, there is a spot where there is a hole in it, but as far as just the overall condition, if you read our ordinances, it's not, it's really not deteriorated to that point where we can force work. I mean, the one open spot, you can't make them secure, secure the building. So that's, I'm just going to go that route first unless you want to do something different. I mean, it's, I think it's going to be a pretty simple fix. Because there is a way for any person to go through there, but erosion or anything could get in and out of the building as far as, you know, it's not to the condition yet. I mean, as far as forcing them to tear it down or something like that. That's all I have unless you have any other questions.
Is everyone fine with Andy contacting the owner of the building there?
I'd say that'd be a.
Make a verbal contact with him.
I'd say it'd probably be the best to start out that way and see if he could just get it taken care of and go from there.
I think, I think they will.
I don't think a big issue would be managed.
If he's plywood and boarding up where there was, you know, an old door, that's basically what it's going to boil down to at this point. Something were to happen later, we could, you know, revisit that. But your ordinance is pretty specific on the amount of decay. I mean, it's going to get pretty bad.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, we'll move on to old business. We have an agreement this evening that used to be signed with Triad for the proposed water project.
I think the Hydras know this though. Probably not that good of a deal. There's wastewater on the back. That's just the E-Verify. It's probably just what people think that we move this for water.
Let's see that.
It's just the E-Verify, which we know is air. I think we will ask fire.
Okay.
That's just that last part.
Yeah, scratch that last part, if you will. Yeah, if you guys recall, this is for the PER to go forward with the water project if indeed that you guys do get grant money from SRF, which they're saying that they do have and which your financial advisor, Steve Brock, says you have. So we have to do a PER as a first step. Otherwise. When we did, if you remember, we did the request for qualifications. They were the only ones on there.
Well, and the contract is our standard contract. We've worked with them. Yeah, that's not even on the E-Verify part. It's on the back of it, but that's a whole different section. Yeah, so we can just, we can just initial that and be fine. But they've taken our contract and just inserted the scope of work into it. And so from a legal point of view, it's what we require for all of our contracts.
Is Triad okay with that? That we have an original and I and we have.
We're fine. As long as you guys are fine, your legal counsel's fine. That's good. Was there some change involved?
Yeah, well, this is to reduce it to eight inches.
Oh.
It's to amend our ordinance.
Oh, no. Pass. Take the new pass. It's new business.
Gotcha.
Any other old business tonight? Okay, we'll do one of new business.
Fred, I have one item of new business. It was discussed at the last meeting and it's been discussed before in regard to the weed cutting. Some of the issues that Andy and Murray have had, especially with, right now, I think it's got to get to 12 inches. And there's a lot of dangerous stuff that can hide in 12 inches of grass or weeds, like rocks, metal, and things that can hurt them and make it more difficult. And so after researching, we've looked and there is no set limit in the sand and state law as to what the, what it can or can't be. And we looked around and we found about nine other communities in the general area that use eight inches as the cutoff at which you're allowed to come and mow. And so what I've put together here along with Melissa is an ordinance that changes the standard in Atlanta so that it's eight inches. And that would permit them to go and mow. It would let them get in there quicker and when they can still see what all's there. Now, because this impacts something with a penalty provision and we're changing a criterion that leads to that penalty, it would be effective 30 days from publication. And so getting it, if the council wants to adopt it now, Robin would advertise it and then 30 days later, Andy and Murray can start operating off of it.
Can we still enforce the existing ordinance until this is effective then so that we can still?
Yeah, the existing one is in effect until.
Okay. Do I hear a motion this evening? If we adopt this provision to this ordinance?
I'll make a motion if we adopt this. Do we need to give us a new ordinance number or is it?
It needs an ordinance number.
Zero four dash 2015 dash zero one.
Three zero one?
No, zero one.
Zero. Zero four dash 2015 dash zero one.
Yep.
My second motion.
Hi.
Hi.
Sign two of these as a.
Of the originals?
Yes.
Just for them?
Any other new business?
Robin, the Tipton Grex sales June 6th, if you want to make it 13 to the 20. Have we got one? Miss Hydras graduation? I don't know. Maybe we have to find that out first. We still got another meeting, but that's from Tipton. Well, we could just set it for, they can just set it for whatever is not Hydras' graduation.
And not, and Tipton's, you said is, Tipton's Gratsales are when?
Six.
When's maybe trash day?
Next month, something like that.
So it's in May, go before.
Yeah, they have heavy trash pickups. May, May. Heavy trash pickup.
Dylan, I just wanted to know about the, uh, using the baseball field to practice on as an option. Can you use it?
We're in the process right now, and we've been working with Aaron Arreton and getting all of the legal stuff out of the way.
Well, I am insured. All the girls on the teams are insured. We can go anywhere and play.
Well, currently, the field doesn't belong to us. Until that deed is signed, it's not our property.
You're, are you, are they parking equipment down there?
It's not town equipment.
So it's open for anybody to park down there or use? Or not?
That'd be what the current owner says, but we can't give you permission, the Little League Association.
Who's the Little League Association? Who are they?
They've disbanded it, which is why we're
So it's in limbo. So basically, it's just open property right now. Basically, right, or no?
Yes and no. It's, it's going to belong to the town, the town has an interest in it, we have to change it.
Well, my question is, why can't I use it? I already went down there and cleaned the field up. I mean, I re-gain the field.
I would wanna make certain that the town has insurance in place.
Providing all my kids.
Does our insurance cover us?
I can verify, I sent it all over to, to get it put on our binder.
We're this close, Dylan.
That close?
That close.
Now, but see, I don't, what I don't get is how can you keep people out of there then? If nobody's supposed to be on there, how do you keep people out there? Right?
But I haven't kept anybody out, cause I've seen kids down.
Cause absolutely, and that's awesome. I love kids going down there. It's great. Needs to be used. I, I don't, I don't see an issue with me going down there with my softball team and practicing on that field. I, I'm insured, I have the paperwork right here. And now, once I clean it up, I start seeing more kids going down there. I seen more people going down there. I mean, I spent six hours on that field out there. We appreciate that. And, and you know, I'm willing to mow it or whatever, take care of that, that field right there until it's, until it's resolved. I mean, or till you guys figure it out. I don't understand why can't
Well, there's, there's two issues right now. First, since we don't have the title. We could no more tell you that you can use that field than I could tell someone they could go do something in your backyard, cause it doesn't belong to us. The second thing from the town standpoint, especially with sports being played, is we wanna make certain that our insurance covers the town. And that way, if something happens on that field and someone files a claim against the town, our insurance will be in place.
So you need to get the equipment off the field or off that property, correct?
No.
The real trailer and the excavator that was sitting there and all that, right?
When it becomes
It's public, so it's, it's public, right? They can use that, right?
No.
No? So they're using it?
They're using it, but that doesn't make it public.
But that don't make sense.
If I, if I No, if I started having parties in your backyard, does that make it public because I'm doing it even though it's against the law? That's what's happening.
Alright, I got it. Thanks.
Like I said, Dylan, we're this close.
I know you are, I know you're working, I appreciate it. I do appreciate it. And I'm just in a tie spot right now, and I just want my kids to have some place to go.
Now, if we don't tell him that he can or can't, if he goes down there, then we're not held liable, and if he takes it upon himself to go down there, same as them guys parking there, we ain't gonna be held liable if he goes down there on his own.
Right. Now, if you know he's doing that over time and we don't act at least
But we don't, we don't have any authority to
Right, right now, we don't.
So he could go down there and continue to do this, so.
I got it. I got it.
Yeah.
So, right now We gotta verify this. Aaron says that if we're not giving him approval or anybody else approval to be on that property, we can't, we don't have the authority to do it. Until it actually is, deed didn't transfer over to us. If they go down there, we have no control, we can't go down there and tell them to get off of it because we are not the owner of it.
Right.
So, with, if they, if they take it upon themselves to go play on that field or whatever and they get hurt, it's not a liability to us at this point.
Right.
So if, if, I, 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 I say that we don't make a decision, and if that's, he goes down there or whoever else is using that, we cannot tell them not to at this point. So if they do it on their own, and something happens, that, we're not, we're not giving, we're not giving anybody, nobody, permission to be on that property, okay? Because we can't, we don't own it.
What John is saying to you is correct, but assuming someone in town utilizes the facility.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
I think it'd be a bad idea for them to do any grading or any kind of maintenance work on that property until we find out, you know, get the legal thing tied off, tied together. So, you know, if some kids wanna get, get down there and play ball, you know.
And it's my it, it's my recommendation that we don't accept the deed until we verify that we've got the insurance. And so, we can just leave it the way it is, and then once we know the insurance is in place for the town, at that time, we can accept the deed and take title to the property.
And, and once that takes place, Dylan, which that's in the works right now, is getting that deed checked out and the insurance. Uh, Robin's already notified her insurance company, they've been verified that it, we have insurance on there because we do not own it yet.
Yes.
But at that point in time, once that deed is transferred over to them, we will have the authority to say who can and cannot be down there on that property. And just like that equipment down there, we have not authorized them, they have just pulled it in there, parked it, and you know, we can't tell them to move it. You know, that's the issue there too. We can't tell them to get their stuff off there, we can't tell the people, it's bringing their dogs out there going crapping out on the field. We, I've seen that, I've been down there, trust me, there's people routinely every day.
Absolutely.
I see it. Ain't nothing we can do.
I was just understanding that somebody came through and told me, no, I cannot be down there, period. And no one can be down there, period. So that's what kinda
No. Yeah, and you're
And I, I wanna very, make sure you guys knew that I had insurance regardless, no matter what. Where my kids go, my team are insured everywhere.
But, yeah, you know, your dad stopped and talked to me when I was down there mowing. I did go down and mow it the first time, and when he talked to me, I told him, we couldn't give anybody permission because, or permission to do it because the legal issues and we had to get that resolved before we had any control or authority over it, and that's why
I wanna go through you guys first before we just wanna add this, went down there and did anything, you know? And, so you don't, no mowing, no nothing, anything like that?
Well, I don't know if, if we're, if the board is going to assign or take care of the grass situation down nearby and outside, I don't know what's going there. But I think we can't even legally do anything until it's tied along.
If I'm using it, I'm willing to mow that where I'm using it, to take care of that. So if you guys do take care of it or whatever happens, that's less for you guys to do.
If, if Robin got it scheduled for Thursday, it will be over Friday because just take it to the courthouse and record it. I mean, Friday, this Friday, like, two days away.
Well, that could be
Three days away, it'd be
Here real soon, hopefully, we'll find something out there this week, but we don't, you know, we gotta verify the insurance too. Even if the deed does go through, we gotta make sure the insurance is on it before we, if that deed was to go through, we don't have the insurance on it yet, we definitely don't want nobody down there. We'll definitely be telling you, you can't be down there until it is insured, because we gotta watch out for our liability.
Absolutely.
The other side of the phone company being down there, I mean, I don't know either way, but they probably donated money to the Little League at some point, so maybe that's one reason why they're using us.
We are now, we don't have any financial records from them, so.
What the reason is, we have no say so on it yet.
That's, that's kinda the way we have, you know, where we, where our hands are tied at this point, you know, and that's where we have to like, we're, we're not saying yes or no. I mean, we're not giving anybody any approval to go down there.
New one's graduation on June sixth. So Gratsales June thirteenth? Yes.
June thirteenth, Gratsales.
Not to override you guys, but I know you care a lot.
Any other new business?
Is Little Murray still working for the town, or is
He is still employed as an ordinance, as an ordinance.
Okay, okay, so he's still working.
Been keeping my trash cans up. Well, when he said he was gonna start forcing me, he looked right at me, so I took the hint, and I'd only been out there for two weeks, so.
Anything else tonight?
Somebody else has put mine out this week to bring in a man, so I'm not
Well, that's what I said. I tried to tell my wife it was her fault, but that didn't work.
We ran an ad in the paper looking for part-time help, and this was an application that came through. And mailed it to Andy, and I think Andy's had a phone conversation with him. He included a copy of this for us to look over.
Is he into getting down and dirty?
He has zero experience, I mean, reading.
Yeah, he's more into
I mean, he's got a college degree in telecommunications.
I wanna get the word out and get more applicants, but you know, I think that we need to try some manner and basically, trying to give some ideas, talking to Andy earlier about possibly how many hours, we might be looking at needing them, the type of requirements or, you know, what's involved this kind of work, so people have a general idea that reading this application here, you know, I mean
Yeah, he has knowledge of what it is.
Yeah, there's a basically, I didn't see really anything in there that would help Andy it out, you know, and Andy don't have time to train somebody in, you know.
Right.
Totally inexperienced. I mean, you ain't gonna find anybody unless they come from another municipality that's done this type of work, it's gonna be a hundred percent experienced, consistent line of work, know what to expect, you know. I don't know, like, you know, we need to, some manner to get the word out and take some more applications or something on this.
Should we put it on the town Facebook?
Anything, you know, as far as, anywhere we can anywhere we could possibly get the word out. And pick up applications here.
Some of the
How many hours was Murray working?
It's heavy to learn, it might be fifty, I mean, it just depended on, so you need a full-time, part-time.
He never had fifty, alright. He went over forty on occasion, on occasion.
Right now, you know, with all this, these locate tickets that he's been talking about, you know, Andy's been doing nothing but locate tickets, and here you got the grass growing like crazy and needing somebody mowing, and you know, still got the rounds and everything else to do, and the water leaks whenever they hit something or whatever, you know, he's still gotta deal with all that, so we need somebody that's got some experience from now, they can take off on their own if he's out doing locates, that can pretty much be familiar with this kind of line of work, that would be a help to him instead of him trying to train somebody while he's covered up anyway, it's gonna be the issue.
Our sewer project's gonna start in like two weeks.
Yeah, on top of the locates. And Andy said he was talking to the contractor, and they're talking about sending four or five crews in once they get dry weather and get in here, so they're gonna really be going strong, and he's gonna be covered up on that, trying to stand atop the sewer project to boot.
Yeah, they're gonna
So
Uh, he said they're gonna stagger, cause they're having four crews coming in, this one's gonna drop off and come in as the trenchers. And they have another group coming in, putting all the handholds in. And, I mean, they're planning on, I think they're planning on getting the ground stuff done before the end of summer. I mean, that's their, that's their plan.
Write your criteria, I'll post it on Facebook.
Anything else this evening from the board? Do I hear a motion that we sign the claims in the adjournment?
I motion we sign the claims and adjourn the meeting.
Oh, second.